Number two, approval of minutes from previous meetings, Monday, November 30th, 2020, Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, and Monday, December 28th, 2020.
Number two, approval of minutes of those three meetings?
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, claims and payroll. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second? Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, manner. Police chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good day.
The month of December is the holiday season and Christmas and New Year's been very, very good in Atlanta. Didn't have very many calls at all, and nothing major happened. So it was really quite nice. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot else. You have any questions?
I have a question on the one dog bite. Can you tell me what happened?
That's going to court. The sheriff's department handled that call. They were taking calls at that time because I was out of town. And they did get the dog put in the kennel. And they're going by all state statutes on that. They're working with the county attorney on that. Other than that, I don't know. It's still being through the court system.
Then we're thinking, Jerry, could we still, can we get the addresses of the unlicensed vehicles out there? Does it work?
Well, we can. I do have unlicensed vehicles on the form. And I know I did take care of two of them.
Yeah, I just kind of keep track of order.
I don't mind. I don't really like the addresses because everybody knows.
Chief Houston though, who decided that the council wants it done?
Well, I can start doing that.
Remember asking last week, I prefer to have it on there.
I'll get them put on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jer, or how's your Jordan working out?
Good. He rode around with me for about a week. We were both kind of working two different vehicles, just so he'd get to know the streets a little bit.
Sure.
So he's off to. They're working out well.
Good, good. Thank you. Economic development, Susan?
Just one quick update on that DTR program for tonight. We're not going to do the resolution. Lowell has had some family issues, so he's been out of the office. So he did not get the guidelines down to the state and haven't been approved yet. So there's nothing for you guys to do. So I talked to Courtney. If we get that back here before the next council meeting, we're going to maybe try to do a special meeting so we can get that done. We kind of told our business owners February 1st, and they're all kind of waiting for that date. So hate to go past that if we don't have to. So that's just kind of the big change. Other than that, you've got everything in my report. Only I did talk to Brian. He wanted a little more information on some of the things that I keep more confidential than I tell you guys. So all I can really tell you currently, I'm working on two new businesses, one major employer and two RBDD IRP loans are in process in addition to the one for Mary's Restaurant. So there's three loans in process. I can't tell you more than that until, you know, the other entities make it public. But other than that, do you have any other questions on the report?
When you say major employer, what do you mean?
Fifteen to thirty employees within the first year manufactured. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Thank you.
City superintendent, Kurt?
It's going to be like Newman. It's pretty normal for December and a little snow, clean a few sewer mains. Biggest thing we got was we got an MCL for the fourth quarter on the school well just the other day. It's two of them within the year, so we're going to get an AO. We got that late today. I got to do some paperwork, fill that out. So the biggest thing on that is Health and Human Services want us to find another source of water, which we're probably in the process of doing that now. So hopefully as soon as possible, but you know, J O and the guys can get together and find some, so.
I think they'll present here February of what we talked about them on the meeting the other day.
What kind of timeline do they give you?
Oh, they'll, it's, they'll work with us. They know that we're, we'll be down to one well and, you know, they'll work with you on fire protection and stuff like that. So it's just more or less put it in the paper, advertise, let people know we got bottled water, you know, if they, you know, people want it and stuff like that. Yes. Otherwise, yeah, it's just a little paper trail, but so that's it. That's it.
Had some residents say thank you for trimming the trees.
We're trying to.
Well, they said to tell you thank you, Susan.
All right.
Thank you. Number five, discussion action, city of Plainview trash service bids opening and acceptance. Oh, they got a double seal.
In this case, I screwed up.
I guess, yeah. Then we said to open them in the order that they came in.
Brian, I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Are you guys video streaming this live right now?
Not yet, I'm a world.
No. Okay. I just had somebody ask me.
Okay. I'm trying to talk as loud as I can, though, sorry.
So while he's doing that, I can explain. Everyone who called got the same answer. Essentially, we have just under 600 residential totes that we obviously own to the city. We had a lease purchase agreement with Bud when we first started. And we have some commercial dumpster to get, some get dumped twice or once a week depending on the commercial business. And we have roughly sixty-some commercial customer total. They obviously weigh here, dump at our transfer station with no tipping fees. About the rough gist of it, really.
How many applications were there?
There was three that got sent in. Jesse Sanitation, which he just opened up. I forget where from. Norfolk, Norfolk. Bud Sanitation, who is our current provider. And then Ashoff, I don't know if it's Ashoff Garbage is where they call himself, but Jim Ashoff.
So the first one from Jesse Sanitation in Norfolk bids for garbage service is a five-year contract from 2021 to 2026. Residential, one tote, $12, and extra tote, $5. Commercial, one tote slash dumpster, $20. So the second bid is from Bud Sanitary Service, who is our current provider. And they wish to stay the same rate of $4,752 a month or $57,024 per year. The third one is from Ashoff Garbage, bid is $61,665 for a five-year contract from 2021 to 2026.
So there's Bud's.
Five years.
Was that? How many years of Bud's?
Sorry.
Five years.
Five years also, yes.
And what was the monthly thing?
The same as it is, stay the same rate of $4,752 a month or $57,024 a year. So ironically, they were opened in the order that they were lowest to highest.
Were you figuring what the question?
No. Jesse's just going to do that.
Do you have totals on the Jesse?
It'll be higher. It'll be like eighty thousand and some, so.
It says one tote, $12, and we're paying seventeen now.
That's what we charge.
That's what they're going to charge.
That's what they want to charge. So if we have 600 totes in town, which we have more than that, times by $12.
I got you.
Yeah, you're looking.
Seventy-two hundred.
Plus our dumpster, yes, so they're like eighty thousand.
Okay, I got you. That's what they.
I'm not sure why you do it like that as we explain them, but that's fine.
Now, that's what it says, yeah. One tote, $12, extra tote, $5, commercial is $20.
If you go with a different company, do you have to buy different totes?
No, we should.
Those are our totes. Yeah, we had a, we had a purchase-lease agreement with Bud Sanitation, I believe, back when they first, when they first, the totes come in.
Probably have to relabel them. They all say Bud's on them, don't they?
What's that?
Do they just say Plainview on them or do they say Bud's?
Without much discussion on it, I'll make a motion to hire Bud's sanitation for the five-year term.
I'll second that motion.
Bid price.
Any further discussion?
They do a really good job. Very, very, awesome job.
Looks like according to the paper, if you got, looks like you got a pretty.
Yeah, they got, they got a good.
They stop those.
They're right there.
They're right there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. We've been, it's been great to work with your guys' town, and we've been able to get a little involved with your town too. So it's been great. We appreciate it.
No, the communication, when you guys are going to be there, so it's been good, on time or kind of frequent, so.
Any further discussion? Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You got awesome guys. Thank you for that.
Appreciate her. Take her.
Thank you so much.
Number six, discussion action, keynote grant teammates for $1,000. This Janice.
She's here.
She's here. Hi, Janice.
Hi.
I wasn't sitting up tall enough, sorry. Would you like to?
Any help you can give the teammates program would be greatly appreciated. We're in our seventeenth year now, and we have, right now, we have twenty-six mentors and mentees. And we've had kind of a tough year with COVID, you know, because we haven't been able to meet in person, but we're just able to get started again. Even though, you know, we haven't been able to meet, the expenses are still there. And so we give, to encourage the kids to come into the teammates program. And then another thing, of course, you don't see new buildings or new sports equipment because of this, but we're investing in our future, our kids, which I think is even more important. And to encourage the kids to, to enter the teammates program and to stay in it, we give them each a $500 scholarship upon graduation. And so we have two seniors this year, and if a thousand dollars would cover those two scholarships, would be just great. Because we still, we have to pay $400 annually just to belong to the teammates. And then we have to pay $250 more all the time for background checks because, you know, they constantly are doing background checks. And the school district does give us $500 every fall, which we appreciate a lot. But, you know, there's just a lot of expenses involved, and we try to do activities and that kind of stuff. So any help that you would like to give us would be greatly appreciated.
Do you wait until they're enrolled or like they complete first semester or how, when do you?
When they complete the first semester, when they start, actually start the second semester. And then we send it to the college, not to them.
Sure. And the current balances at the end of the year is $38,451.76. Three, eight, four, five, one point seven six.
Janice, do the mentors have to have the background checked every year?
Every three years.
Every three years.
Board members, anybody that's involved with the program has to.
Softball coaches have to be every year. Isn't that interesting?
I, I think three years is kind of often, actually. Whatever.
Make a motion to approve the keynote, the teammates keynote grant for $1,000.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Number seven will be tabled. Number eight, discussion action, health board recommendation for nuisance property. 105 South King Street, Plainview Pioneer Townsite Company, addition, block 10, lot 10.
This was just from the last meeting. This was just a carryover. You guys said you wanted to give us more time, so just came up from last meeting.
Can you say what all you've done since the last meeting?
Well, our Christmas was spent hooking onto our trailers behind the garage and giving everything away. So you can tell that's gone. We just had to give it away because I, I'm sorry, but I am really, really frustrated to think that Jeff's has done on for over a year, and that place looks like a disaster. And I had to give him my stuff away, but we have a little bit left, but that's all.
What does the council wish to do?
Want to refresh your memory on what the resolutions look like? Here's a blank. This is the same format you've used before, but of course, I knew nothing of content. So it has the topics, but it has no findings and it has no orders other than this looks like a nuisance. If you decide to do something, you should fit it into this packet. If you decide to do nothing, of course, you don't need it.
Jerry's on the help board, Bob and Brian are on the help board, our other help board member is.
Well, I went by these places before the meeting. And she's correct. All the trailers, everything in the back are gone. It looks a lot better back there. And the other deals we're doing has to do with maybe an unlicensed vehicle and one other vehicle, but we'll work with them on that. But other than that, everything looks really good back there.
Jerry, would you class the class of nuisance property at this point when we grow back?
No, never not. It's not any of anybody else's property with the vehicle. Everything's good there.
That's true.
Did you do that?
No.
Did I say we do nothing?
Did you go?
No action on it?
No action? Okay.
Number nine.
Would that be the correct way, there's no action?
Well, you know, get it clear off the book with a motion to the effect that you believe it's adequately cleaned up, and this is the end of it for now.
Okay, I make it.
No, no action doesn't really get it gone.
I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah, some type of motion to the effect that, you know, you find it to be satisfactory. Probably be in order except for vehicles, if that's an exception. But you don't need the detailed form then, just something on the book.
Okay, I make a motion presented by the police chief that the property is no longer a nuisance property.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Number nine, discussion action, resolution number 623, nuisance property, 107 West Locust, Plainview Pacific Townsite Company, first addition, block 10, lot 161718.
Boy, look at that property. Day ago, when I drove by, since it snowed, a lot of that nuisance stuff we were talking about, there was iron stuff there. Can't really tell a lot of it was under the snow. I don't know if he took the snow and buried that stuff under the snow or. But before it snowed, it looked like they did have a lot of it cleaned up, but I'm not sure how much. So.
Damon, were you able to help him with that tractor then or what?
Yeah, he was going to get rid of that because we tried setting it on there and it didn't.
It wasn't working?
It wasn't going to work, so he was going to sell that, so I took it off of there and set it back down on the ground right by his tractor.
I appreciate you trying to help him.
Well, that's what it is.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had the wrong address.
You're thinking of one on fourth, aren't you?
Yeah, that's still, I haven't seen much of a difference in the last month or two with that one, you know. Still a lot of property. Kind of like it was with the last one we were talking about on South King.
Yeah.
This stuff just hasn't moved. It might look a little better because it's in line, but it's not. It's still there. So I don't see a whole lot done with that. It's the same as been for a month or two.
Mr. Ratliff, attend. He's not here, is he?
No.
I don't see him.
And you know, the, the package from him is he didn't want to get rid of any of it. Maybe somebody could go talk to him and try and keep him on an even keel and offer to help haul some away or something. But if a person feels it's all valuable and the council doesn't, that's a problem.
Yeah.
But if one's got to do it, it's right the other one gets rid of their stuff too. Despite what a personal feeling is on it. I understand Cindy's side. Obviously, you have some nice stuff, but it's considered a nuisance to get rid of it.
I would say Bob probably put it on that mailhead. It's not what you have, it's how it's displayed, where it's at. Would you say that's more the problem? If you have too much for the amount of space you have, you have to make a decision.
Yeah, correct. At least someone just has to go, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know. Jeremy, you and I want to now talk to him sometime?
I think that'd be the best. It's going to happen. So, I mean.
Well, yeah.
If he needs something, haul out, haul it. I'll haul for him.
We just have to reason with him.
Yeah, you know, maybe the city could offer a couple hours of equipment truck just for no charge if he'd cooperate, but.
I think I'd get a can of worms that we wouldn't want to get into.
If he won't cooperate, well, that's true, but on the other hand, the help is better than the battle.
You guys want like a deadline? You want to move forward and give him a deadline and then we can offer help in the meantime to help get rid of it? Or do you want to wait on it for a month or do we want to?
Courtney, Courtney, if I'm wrong.
I vote the deadline.
You've got a deadline in the resolution, don't you?
They had December 1st, which is why we tabled it.
The resolution has been passed.
No, we did not pass.
The resolution has not been passed.
Nope.
Okay.
We voted last month to give him more time because it's December.
Okay, well, then here's another copy of the resolution if that hasn't happened. I mean, again, that's your format if you want to set down some rules that you think everybody can live with. Problem now is you're in the worst possible time of the year to have it worked on.
Of course, a lot of this stuff is big stuff. I mean, it's a lot, I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
If you use this at all, of course, you'd have to change the date.
That property sits on three lots.
Very small. So, honey, should we do that, set a deadline for the next meeting and then I do when we don't talk to him. Try to do something, I don't know, it's a tough situation.
So you want to pass the resolution and then put before and then pick either time frame? Is that what you guys are looking at? Yeah.
Hate to keep pushing on, but it's one of the most difficult situations we'll have.
Yeah, I, I say we do it in my next city council meeting.
Yeah, if you, if you set your date the day before the next meeting or something like that, then you're either going to argue or give him another month if it isn't done yet.
So the eighth is the Monday before next city council meeting. Or the ninth is the council meeting, but you guys.
The eighth is?
You'd want to probably do it the day, I don't know, wouldn't you? Day four. We'll just do the eighth. The eighth.
Okay, motion? For February 8th, 2021?
The content there, remember, the content's just out of thin air. If you want to say something different, say something different.
Is that what you, are you, motion on Brian, for February 8th, 2021?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Put the date to February 8th, 2021.
Second? Any further discussion?
Are you passing the resolution then or no?
Yeah, he made a motion about.
You're doing the, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, res, 623, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Christmas is over, so that means Lent is coming up. The fish fries, number 10, discussion action, special designated liquor license for St. Paul's Catholic Church. February 26th with alternate date of March 5th, March 12th, alternate March 19th, and March 26th with an alternate of April 2nd from 4:00 PM to midnight each, every other Friday.
Kelly's not here, but he doesn't even know if we're going to be able to do it, but he decided to go ahead and get them just in case. They're inside, so there's nothing that they're need fencing or anything, so they follow all the guidelines that the liquor commission sets out for their special designated liquor license.
Are these last year too, then?
Yeah, they get them. They've gone for the last three years, I believe, so.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the SBL license for the provided dates in front of me and the alternate, alternate dates for the St. Paul's Catholic Church.
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 11, discussion action, municipal water rates ordinance, number 961.
This is the ordinance we've been talking about for the last three, four months. I've had nobody ever come in, contact me, and have a other thing, so we're presenting for.
So I can just say that.
Do you like the state?
Yeah.
I got a little presentation I'd like to talk about the water rates.
Sure.
Will do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, they're going fast here. On the list. Anyway, start with, I'll just kind of read this here so I don't lose my place and stuff. But start with, I'd like to read this as a presentation about the proposal to increase the water rates as outlined in the newspaper article back in November. I'd like to go through this question and come, comment presentation basically, and then answer any questions the council might have after that, if you have any questions for me anyway. And I'll hand out copies of this stuff to all the members and the newspapers and whatnot. have it. So, uh, first, first of all, the first part of that article talked about the city administrator discussing the twenty twenty-one fiscal year with council and a quote stating that the city had twenty, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred eighty-four more expenditures and revenues. Now, these not only my comments, maybe your question, but other people I've talked to and the conversations I've overheard, so, uh, this isn't online. But anyway, the first thing came to mind was, if this was a budget, why didn't the expenditures equal the revenue? I mean, that's what a budget is for, isn't it, to come up your revenues and your expenditures? And if that was the case, if they didn't, revenue didn't equal the expenditures, you know, why wasn't the expenditures reduced or the revenue somehow increased instead of half of the budget percent and stuff? Uh, secondly, later in that article, it stated the administrator said that one of the solutions to correcting the deficiency would be fixing the city's water budget by boosting its revenue through increased water rates, helping the water department to break even instead of being in the red. But then it goes on later in the article saying that one of the reasons for the water budget deficit was a budget transfer out of the water department to the city's general fund, and that would increase it from thirty thousand to eighty-five thousand. So, I guess my comment was, if you have that deficit already, why would you increase the deficit by taking it out of that account and putting it in the general fund? And you already got a deficit there. So, um, it makes sense to me. Another issue was stated that, that would, that would not has, be increasing the water budget is a bond payment for the new well that would probably, probably be drilled in the community. Uh, first of all, it's always good to anticipate solutions and possible ways to pay for them, raising rates for possible solutions that have not been decided on for that matter even considered yet. Isn't that kinda getting a proverbial cart before the horse? If a definite plan, solution is decided upon and a bond issue is needed for a well or some other solution, that bond issue should be voted on by the people who pay taxes, not by raising rates more than eighty percent, plus the per gallon rate was go up two dollars a thousand, way before anything is even decided on how best to, the issue should be resolved. It was stated that the Plainview rates were the lowest quarter percentile for communities of similar size. That brings up the question, where are those communities? Are they around northeast Nebraska communities, or were they around Omaha and Lincoln, which is probably gonna have higher rates, you got a higher cost of living and everything else? I talked to three different towns, Creighton, Randolph, and Pierce. Of course, Creighton's rates are high because of their, uh, reverse offices plant basically up there, and I've got them somewhere, but I don't have them down here. Anyway, Pierce's rates are eight and a half dollars a month, plus two dollars per thousand, and they just put in a new well about a year ago. And the city administrator wasn't there, couldn't find out what the well costs, but, uh, I might have something to do with something later here. Uh, Randolph's rate is twenty dollars and a dollar twenty for thousand, and I think that's somewhere where Plainview's is right now. Is that?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Plainview's water rates.
Is currently?
Fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents for your base, it's a dollar seventy for a thousand, and then it's two dollars over the ten.
Okay, alright. Anyway, on a final note, uh, there were numbers of nine hundred thousand plus thrown around as an estimate for a new well. I'm just curious, where did those numbers come from? And number two, if all our wells are soon to be pumping too high of nitrates, why isn't a new well possibly gonna be doing the same thing? I mean, you spend that much money on a well and you end up with high nitrates? Sounds risky. Maybe other alternatives should be investigated thoroughly before a decision is made that might expensive, might be an expensive mistake or an excuse to raise rates for other purposes. Even if all wells should test high in nitrates, it'd be a lot cheaper to supply bottled water to residents for a shorter period of time until a final solution could be put into place, even if it turned out to be a treatment plan. Which if all we can get is nitrate wells, that's probably the only solution. Maybe there's other solutions coming up, technological stuff, so. Anyway, that's what I have. You guys want a copy on? Give you all one. Any questions for me before I get out of your hair?
Hand the pile.
Do you want me to?
I have.
I came in for the last three months, all these questions, I was born happy to go through them and try and help resolve them. Are you very fine, aren't you? If I can get that to shoot for the twelve for each of y'all? I just dropped some things down. Uh, budget transfer is because it was sucking out of the electric department fund, um, they've depleted that, so there is no more electric savings to transfer over to generally more. Why it has to come out of one of the only other, uh, revenue-based, um, utility departments we have? That's that question. Um, why does not the budget meet expenditures? I'm not gonna sit here and bash anybody or how things went beforehand. The budget hasn't flowed for quite some time, and the numbers that were put in for incomes weren't, they, they didn't match, so we, we didn't have much choice. Uh, I came here, uh, in July, August, we, we did the best we could. Uh, there's just, we just couldn't cut out two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars out of such a small budget we have, so that answers that question unless someone has any other comments in. Lower quarter percentile in the community, uh, that was through a municipal league survey, which I believe Eric and Brooke got received, they went through that, so that is that we received from the municipal league of municipalities, so that should be covered. Anybody chime in if there's a question? I need to. Uh, nitrates for wells, if you dig a well in the same spot, you'll get more nitrates? That's true, that's why we have the lower Elkhorn District and J E O. have been working on it for a couple of years now, and they don't plan on digging it in town. It will be outside of town and pipe into town, so that is resulting in that issue. They thought of that and they're quite well aware of the nitrates that are underneath our soil. The, where did the estimate come from? Well, come from obviously the engineers, the people who do that for a living. Uh, let's see here, any, I guess any questions from the crowd? Anything I missed? We can keep, I can do anything?
Well, I guess I have to comment on the well. Creighton's had this nitrates problem for a number of years, and nobody seems to really know how that's flowing, with Plainview's been grabbing you at the worst over the years. So, did he go, oh, well, what are they talking about, half a mile out of town? Nine miles out of town? Two miles out of town?
Yeah, it's right now, they're gonna do a present.
Ten or twelve.
Yeah.
Miles?
Yeah. To find decent water, I mean, we, we found a pocket out here a mile and a half, and it's just a pocket. Maybe it's gonna last a year, maybe it's gonna last twenty years, but, you know, you gotta take your chances on that. That's why we've got these, we got J E O., I mean, they did the offer testing, and they're doing all their stuff, so.
That's just it. I mean, all the towns around are dealing with the nitrates.
Oh, well, yeah, you can go.
So, somebody who did it, they dig it on the other side of Omaha, they're gonna be nitrate to the problem.
We're gonna, we're in an agriculture community, we're gonna have problems with nitrates. I mean, at the last water meeting in, only on December, they said that there's more and more pockets of nitrates, and you're not gonna be able to run from it. Digging a well is not gonna solve that problem because you could, six months later, end up with a pocket of nitrates running through it. A well is not the answer.
Well, treatment finds about three times the tires of a well, if we go there.
Right, but you don't need to treat the whole water tower. Why treat the whole water tower when you're putting it into the sewer or your yards and stuff? You only have to do enough for the drinking water, and there are little R O. systems that can go underneath your cabinets that do the exact same thing, and they're only two hundred bucks a piece. There's plenty of other options out there.
I've got an R O. system at my place since we moved in, and we drink the water all the time.
There's plenty of other options.
On a regular basis.
You're welcome to ask the engineers.
What the Health and Human Services guidelines, the guy has to do.
You're gonna have to ask the engineers, but the engineers are gonna tell you, and the state's gonna tell you, you have to furnish drinkable water. And having two systems, one plumbed to a drinking faucet and one for the lawn is not feasible.
So then, what's your answer then if they drill us well ten miles outside town and six months later to a year, we end up with high nitrates?
You need to have that conversation with the engineer.
Yeah, I don't, that's not my.
But keep in mind, you're not, you're not picking a well here tonight, you're just setting a water rate.
Right. Um, but, but like Kurt said, either way, if we decide there is a, there's a dream solution that comes down in the year, the, the system, the treatment system, our engineers have told us is three times the expense. Uh, you have constant operation of that system, it has to work all the time. Right, but you only gotta get that, you only gotta get your water below a ten. You don't have to do the whole entire, uh, water power. You only gotta run enough through to get it below a ten.
You got a loop system, you have to do the whole system.
Yeah.
It's blended together, so your average has to be below the channel. So, even if one well is high, it's gotta average with everything else that's running through your system. That's our problem right now. Even with the average, it's not below what it needs to be, so.
Our, our average. Our average system is lower.
But you, if your one well comes back, they're still gonna take you for it.
And these are all questions, luckily, I think, like I said, we'll have the engineers come, I think, next month. These are all great questions. We can, we can ask him if there is a solution out there that's, he did say that the well will be your cheapest solution compared to a treatment plant. So, if you wanna treat a plant, that's, that is board, uh, but.
I granted a treatment plant costs three times as much to put in as far as the well goes. Is there any guarantee a well's gonna last five or ten years?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so if you have constant maintenance on this treatment plant, you build that one time, you're gonna have the, the maintenance that goes along with it, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, filter, filtration, man hours, whatever. Couldn't a person put together a, a possible cost of that for, say, a ten-year period is, is versus the well and see where it, where averages out?
I can talk to our engineers, they can bring.
You know, I mean, just, just a thought.
Yeah, I can talk to them about a, a ten-year layout for a treatment facility, a treatment plant.
You know, I mean, it's obviously gonna be more expensive than punching a well in, but, you know, you run a gamble when you launch a well in, six months, a year, two years down the road, that well's no good and you can't drink out of it, so now you're back up to dropping in a million dollars punching it in your well.
Well, on the treatment plant too, you're adding stuff to the water.
Right, right.
You don't know how long your pipes are gonna handle it and, you know, your infrastructure.
Absolutely.
A whole lot of them.
I, if the council can do that, I can ask them, bring that forward.
Yeah, right.
There's also additional training for your employees. Whenever we're in Creighton, that was always something to figure in, you know, water treatment facility. When we had the flood in nineteen, um, it was really bad because it got flooded, so you have to recharge the whole thing and it was down for quite some time as they figured that out. I also got, tweeted a bill from a resident of Pierce who's watching, and their base water rate is eighteen fifty.
So, we're, we're currently cheaper than them right now, so. Um, and then that's a good point, the, the raise isn't just to cover the new well. We have, obviously, we have meter expenses. We just spent twelve thousand dollars on new earths because our, our re, our radio reads are outdated. Uh, we've got new technology we gotta buy and replace, we've got maintenance upkeep, uh, we've got expenses throughout backdoor repair, uh, supplies, we have, I mean, it's just not just, the increase isn't just for a new well to supply the town, that's not what it's all for.
Going off of his, uh, budget not being balanced, is increasing the water rates an attempt to partly balance the budget, or do you have another plan for that? Because I know like when a personal person has a budget issue, they make a plan to fix it in, in the term.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you had a plan for it or not.
Yeah, this is, this is a step towards balancing our budget. A lot of that goes back to that transfer he was talking about, which we stated earlier on through our budget workshops, that we were essentially siphoning out of our savings account for our electric department back when it was operating, and it had, it had a large increase of, of cash on hand. We were slowly sucking out of that, and after this last year, we literally depleted it down to where there's nothing to, to grab from anymore. So, we, we've emptied our pockets now, and now we're looking to grab something else because we, it's gone, so. And, and we don't have many utilities that obviously aren't making money for us. We have sewer, water, and trash. We don't longer sell electricity, uh, so we gotta, we gotta grab from somewhere. I, I've said it for the last four months, if anybody has any other ideas, I am more than happy to come and talk to me. Um, these are some great ideas, we can start looking into them. Uh, unfortunately, I don't think lowering our water rate, what we have, uh, projected is gonna solve or help us at all, because I, I still feel that we might have other changes as we go forward.
Has there been a look at expenses, reduce expenses? Because that's never been mentioned as far as reducing expenses, that's just forgiven supposedly, and so, has it been a serious look at?
Yeah, we, we have looked at expenses in budget, we didn't get a whole lot of time, our budget season was short. Uh, I've had actually a lot of people telling me they need the increase because, uh, I've heard rumor of needing more police, which is more money. Um, everybody wants more things, concrete. Uh, we don't have a, a really, I'm gonna say loose budget, we don't have a whole lot of frills in our system. Uh, we don't drive new pickups, we don't have new backhoes. Uh, I'm more than happy to sit down with some people and if they think that we're really overspending and, and wasting money, please come talk to me.
Do you have, do you have like a plan in place to increase revenue by taxes or, I mean, no one likes taxes, I believe, I'm.
Our taxes are maxed out for our levy, so we can't, yep, unless we go out for a bond and that's voted by the people.
And we talked about when our auditors here, our valuation is very low, which also affects what comes into your town. So, we, we've gotta start somewhere, and I, I know that the thirty-two is a, is a hit for everybody, um, but we're not gonna change valuation overnight. Uh, we can't raise our taxes overnight to supplement, and we are not spending frivolously, I can tell you that right now. Um, we had a income put in last year into the budget that was incorrect, was almost overstated by what, a hundred?
About a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars. There was no way on even on a, the driest year ever, we would've made that amount of revenue.
So, how come if you're at the budget so tight and we're so broke, how come you guys ask for such big raises for the employees? They may deserve it, but every business you ever worked for, if they're struggling and having trouble like that, why would you give raises so big? I mean, you guys gave fifteen percent raises to twenty-one.
Because they have been given for years.
Yeah.
Our guy, they were well, people were well underpaid where they should've been.
Well, yeah, everyone's underpaid, I mean, but what good does that do if we're going broke? I brought those numbers forward, um, I did an array, I believe our staff deserves it, I still say that today, even with our budget crisis. Um, you wanna think about things that, uh, cost money if we have people that find better jobs elsewhere or we couldn't find employees for over a year. Um, when you start contracting things out, you, you lose money terribly, because our guys can do it a lot cheaper. Uh, you have one water main break, and if you don't have the, the qualified guys there like Kurt and Artur does, and are, uh, you could spend thirty, forty thousand on one water main break, so I can pay for an employee in one, in one bad night. Are you guys taking the time to, uh, teach these other guys how to take care of the water main and stuff, because, you know, Kurt might wanna retire someday.
They are, they are taking their classes and getting, uh, certified.
The, the last water line I watched the guys work on was, was broke, it wasn't a main, it was a service, and our newest guy was down there working on himself, I mean, they were there teaching him, but he was down there getting dirty, so. Yeah. I, I think, I think Kurt's trying to, believe it or not, I'm not gonna say it's because he's getting older, he doesn't wanna jump down the hole anymore, but he's, he's letting the other guys do a little more digging, so I think he's doing a great job at it.
I, I've had to say it's not just from the council that raised the raise, I think the public tells you that we have some really good employees, and we expect, as you know, a lot from them. When you get called to complaints about how come my street wasn't bladed off because I wanted to get out of my driveway, those are the guys that have to do it.
Right.
So, I think there's a lot of comments from the community that our employees are more valued during what their paychecks were referring, were, were flexing.
And we haven't had any complaints about our staff working out, they, I think they've done a great job since I've been here now, so.
If you recall, there were a number of us that said that electrical percentage was not gonna be enough.
Yep.
I mean, when, when that got passed, we all knew it was five or six percent short for the amount of money we were taking in on the old system.
Right.
That you purposely put in the one-year review of that electrical rate so you can You purposely put in the one-year review of that electrical rate so you can change it if you needed to. Six and one half dozen of the other, but that's the one that makes you the most money because that's the one everybody uses the most of. And everybody knew it was too low in the first contract with NCDP, we knew fourteen wasn't gonna do it.
Yeah, I think it's sixteen, whatever, but yeah, you're right, it's not.
Well, I know, I know Courtney, you talked about your evaluations, you know, you can't put those up overnight, but I know if you, I mean, we start talking about these nuisance properties, I mean, that's a debal, you know, things. I mean, if we try to come on those a little bit harder, you know, that will fast track our Facebook feed.
Hell, Moore's been doing a hell of a job.
Yep, they haven't.
That's been a number of people.
It's nuisance abatement, but it probably is not a good time right now. Since you don't have no money for one. That would solve a lot of your problems.
And the other thing, when we get the DTR done, the downtown, if, once we get the buildings remodeled in a couple of years, they're gonna reevaluate the downtown business district, so that'll help out a lot also. We, we had a lot of discussion, move forward with action, what does the council wish to do?
I think we should table it till we figure out what we need.
I'd be more comfortable doing that. Kinda sounds a lot of jumbled opinions, so. I wanna make a motion to table ordinance nine six one the next meeting. Waiting on more information.
Guys asked what, I mean, you guys voted on, I'm sorry. More information as in, and we answered a lot of things in here. I just can only direct at what we're looking for, so I can...
Like the engineer's supposed to come next month?
Yeah, I can talk, yep, we were talking about it, so after he shows up and...
Like put it like after his presentation?
Okay, that's fine, yep, and then I'll talk to him about cost analysis on treatment plant? And then he'll see if he can get that wrapped up and that's, okay. Anything else before, for any more detail that I want somewhere else?
Okay, voting Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes to table till next month. Number twelve, what's gonna be tabled unless, did you wanna say anything, or do you want me to?
I really don't have any comments, I guess I, I don't think anything is necessary unless you guys wanna talk about some type of renegotiation. And I've told Brian now, and I, perhaps most of you have heard the rumor, I'm in negotiations with a firm out of Albion to probably put somebody into Plainview, but that remains slightly uncertain. They would like an opportunity to talk to the council and roll into a new system if they could, if that comes together. The young guy, they're talking about hiring, well, he's not a beginner, he's got eight years' experience. And he would be the one that would be most available. But, you know, I have got nothing to give you tonight to tell you any of that is certain. And especially for the younger fella, he doesn't want his name revealed, so I can't tell you to go interview him. He doesn't wanna lose the job he's got till he's got something else. But that's out there, and it's coming if you wanna look at that as a possibility. You know, the other aspect is, I know Susan is concerned about six months of stability or something like that. And if you're gonna table it, I think at least some of us would like you to table it for a length of time rather than just month to month.
Right.
I'm not gonna start any major projects if we're sitting here every month talking about doing something.
Agreed. So what do you think, a six-month table and revisit?
Yeah. Is that what we agreed on earlier today?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Brian a couple of times, and I've talked to Jeremy, and I've talked to Bruce. We have too many projects on the works. We've spent the last three years getting to where we are today. So your DTR is in jeopardy, your housing complex is in jeopardy. We have three business loans totaling almost four hundred thousand dollars in jeopardy. Ashley Dendinger, helping her with her student loans, in jeopardy, even though that's a Plainview pride thing. The way that that board sits is assigned based on your position. If the city attorney is the treasurer, we have no attorney, and we cannot help Ashley with that program. On top of that, I have just, you know, in the succession planning, that's something, you know, in my, in my job, you hired me to do those things, to work with your employees. So if Bruce is doing, working on succession planning, my PCD board is gonna jump in and help. The city of Osmond needs a local attorney, the city of Pierce needs an attorney. If we can craft a package to lure this attorney firm here with taking over Bruce's practice and give us the chance to do that, those things don't happen overnight, but that's what you pay me to do. So I'm asking you to give me time to do those things, otherwise you have other things in jeopardy. You won't be getting that manufacturer I told you about, you won't be getting those other two businesses. Mary's loan is on hold, I mean, that affects the lesion, there's, the domino effect was huge. It was a really sickening feeling to open that Facebook post on December twentieth and see what had happened. So, yeah, I haven't been happy, Brian knows it. I'm asking you for continuity. DTR especially, you've never been through one, you're gonna need a city attorney, things will come up. We had it happen in Creighton, somebody tore down a building, it fell on someone else's building, it's the city's problem. You need an attorney, stuff's gonna happen. You do some concrete work, you hit a line, whose fault, whose responsibility is that? You're gonna need an attorney, I can't tell you all the things that are gonna happen, but things will happen. And just as we get into the DTR and the drawdowns and the paybacks and issuing those payments, we're gonna need the assistance of an attorney. Yes, the DED does this on a regular basis, but every city is different, our program is different, our plans are different. What's in the best interest of the city of Plainview, that's your job, that's to keep the continuity so we can get these projects through and help us get through this, and the best interest of the city of Plainview is to bring some new attorneys to this area. Bruce has made no bones about wanting to retire in a year, that's not, that is not a secret, I think this was handled wrong. We should've talked, we could've done this a number of ways, but I think that, that is in our best interest. We have need of an attorney in this area, the other communities in this county have need of an attorney. Our residents need an attorney, so I would ask that you give us the time to do that.
And Bruce is fine with that as well?
I think that's the only alternative from my standpoint.
I just wanna make sure.
Can I clarify, your job as an attorney or just a city attorney? Are you giving up your practice too? I mean, you wanna retire from your practice?
Well, as everybody that's watched the drama downtown knows, I've had two lawyers, three lawyers, whatever. It's very hard to hold a lawyer in a small town because they can go somewhere else and make fifty thousand dollars more or worse. And you have to be pretty certain you're gonna stay in a small town no matter what. You know, I've lost people because their wife couldn't stand it, I've lost people because they got a better offer in Omaha. But these folks from Albion are small-town people, and they wanna branch out into additional small towns, that seems promising. It's the best I've seen in some time, so I think it's worth trying. Now, it might be a, you know, gradual slowdown on my part and a gradual increase on their part. Well, we don't know what we've got yet. You know, you can't expect it to happen overnight, but you're, I, I expect something to happen.
I couldn't agree more with Susan. It really hurt seeing that comment and knowing how it would trickle down into our community and the people it would affect. To be honest with you, it was badass words. Currently Bruce is on a retainer. When you proposed to a person from Creighton, did you even talk to her about the rates or anything?
Yes.
Was it the same retainer or was it higher?
It was gonna be negotiated but similar.
That's not an exact answer. We, our budget is in crisis, the city administrator already said it. So if you were thinking about the best interest for our city and our citizens, why would you even do this? You have two years left on your term. If we go into six months or nine months for an interim, you're even less on your term. I don't know what prompted this, I think I know, but that's all speculation. If we replaced with a new attorney and we still had to go to Bruce for information because he has years and years of knowledge, we're not only gonna be paying a different attorney, plus, we're gonna be paying him by the hour. So again, that affects our budget quite dramatically. Also, that attorney is a niece of the chief of police, is that a conflict of interest? I would say yes. We've been through conflicts of interest before in the past, and it hasn't turned out well for our city. It's cost us a lot of money. I just, I really think the city needs to focus, city council members need to focus on what is best for the citizens, what is best for our economics evolved it? Instead of you just all of a sudden wanting to do this, Brian, because you didn't think through it at all.
No, yes, I did, but...
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
Because if you did, you would've taken her, everything that she's done into consideration.
Okay, she told me afterwards, but, okay, that's, any further comments?
I think their question of, of your motivation is pretty important, especially for the community. I mean, what was the driving reason behind wanting to release the city attorney?
I already told Brooke, so...
I, I think...
I would like to know.
I mean, Brooke...
I think the city would like to hear. Brian, you're the mayor physician, if you can answer these questions, then you should be in it. Can you please answer us?
I wanted my own cabinet, like the, all the appointed persons.
So there was, was that the single reason, or you just...
That was the one, yes.
It wasn't because he was...
That, that doesn't make sense for what's best for our city and what's going on in it right now.
Do you, do you not like him personally?
Yes, I like him personally.
Do you think he's doing a bad job, like?
Okay, we're not having those discussions.
Brian, you're in the right area, people, you need to answer, I think.
I, I don't, I don't think he's doing his job, does that, if that helps?
Okay, I mean, that's a reason, I mean, that's, that's fine.
I don't, I was, seriously, I don't think he's doing his job.
What are you basing that on?
Huh? There's other people in the council or...
I just wanna know what you're basing it on, because I have asked Bruce to learn about a whole bunch of different things in the last three years. There's been a learning curve to our revolving loan funds, cleaning the city up on six hundred and five thousand dollar lending capacity.
What's the excuse about, what's the excuse about the PCIS building still sitting there or the blue house sitting across from Steinkrause's? I mean...
The PCSI building has had issues, and Jeremy and I have been talking about that with Christine Bar, the treasurer, about another, but that has nothing to do with Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce can wave a magic wand over that.
That is not Bruce's problem, if the IRS has leans all the way around.
Most of you have not been here to hear that speech, but some of you have. What's going on with the PCI building is that it has thousands of dollars of tax liens. Joe Groff was in my office again last week offering it up, and I said, there's no point, Joe. He doesn't own the whole thing, he only owns the building. You know, if you wanna know answers to these questions, ask me for God's sake. But Joe doesn't, Joe owns half the building, it's owned, or the lot behind. PCI owns the building, PCI was dissolved six years ago. There's fifty thousand dollars' worth of tax liens. The only way to get any kind of clear title on that thing is to do a quiet title action in the district court. The council actually authorized me to do that about a year ago. Right after that happened, the city's legal affairs got real messy and real complicated. And to some extent, it's a matter of smoothing out the budget and not turning it into a fifteen thousand dollar a month legal expense. That stuff could wait, so it waited. Sure, the PCI building is a disaster, but it needs to go to court. The other one, the house across from Steinkrause, was bought on a tax sale by some... Oh, shall we say morons from Omaha, there's nobody here wants to defend them, are there? They bought the tax sale certificate, and they never paid, so they haven't got the deed. So we can't sue them, and the county attorney needs to kinda turn it up a little bit and make them either pay or take it away from them. They're sitting there with the purchase in a district court tax sale, and the county attorney really needs to revisit that. We could file a lien, we could do a quiet title action again, but if the county would get its business done, the city could just step in and not have to spend any money. So both of those are sitting there and hung up for extremely messy, complicated reasons.
Well, I think we can fix the one across from Steinkrause come October. Jeremy was at my office today at the county courthouse, and we went and talked to Ted Lowberg, the county attorney.
Oh, good.
So apparently the city is on the hook for nine thousand dollars on the taxes. That company bought the tax certificate, but that means that they bought the bad debt, and they rolled that debt over to the city of Plainview.
The debt is just a lien against the property, it's not the city's debt. They would like a lot of money, but we've already turned them down five times.
But there will be a tax foreclosure.
No, the, the debt is the back taxes plus the fourteen percent because it is in the city's name.
But they can foreclose their head off, they're not gonna sue the city for the money, they just got the property.
So it is going to come up in October on a foreclosure, we talked to Ted, and so at that point, the city, that, basically foreclosure is like a bankruptcy for the debt on the house. We will be able to acquire that house at that time, we're waiting on it. So these things are being worked on, but it's definitely not the fault of the city attorney.
I think we're getting kind of off track, I know it's a huge discussion, but, I mean...
And folks, I appreciate those of you that showed up to speak, and that's good. But if the matter is resolved for the time being, perhaps that's the way to let it go. I mean, if others of you have short comments, maybe that's worthwhile, but...
Well, there's probably a few more questions that need to be answered, at least I think the public should know.
Well, I am not running the meeting.
It's not on the agenda.
What, it is on the agenda, it is on the agenda there, though.
Communication was the problem, but it's been fixed now because the people that didn't communicate now have, so the problem's been fixed. Number thirteen, council comments, Brian?
Really? We're just gonna move on?
What?
Are you tabling it?
Motion to table it for seven months, or six months?
Six months.
I mean, I, I would like to ask a few more questions if the council would allow it.
I think it's public knowledge that the public should be, should know about.
Because it's not, it's not only the motivation behind it, it, is it can he legally do it? Did you consult any legal counsel before you talked with Bruce and let him go?
I never officially let him go.
Is that correct, Bruce, was that your understanding?
That was another...
As you saw and was published in the paper last week, Brian restated his point and said he...
That means originally?
Meant it to be anything significant, he didn't mean it to be that, and he took it back. I mean, that's the best could be done under the circumstances. I told him if he said that, we would continue on, and that's kinda what we've agreed to do.
Rephrase the question, did you consult with any legal counsel before speaking with Bruce about that?
Yes, I called the league.
What did the league municipalities say?
They said that the mayor can appoint those four positions at any time ratified by the council.
And the league will tell you, if you call them, of course, that they don't give legal advice.
That would be my other point.
Which they do, and I've talked to them about that a little bit on other occasions. But I have also told the city, they, they, it's an interesting scenario, in the last ten days, they, they ask me questions on how best to make it sure they can let me go, but I'm the guy to ask. And I've answered them because the community needs an answer. Well, the answer is, my position and three or four other positions appointed by the mayor are subject to the possibility of dismissal by the mayor. Politics are the only remedy, and you folks are here to talk about that. And the mayor has taken heart to some of the comments he's received and backed off on the question. I mean, that's how it stands right now.
Well, it sounds like the, he took it as an okay to let you go, and then you are also saying that now they're asking you how to best let you go. So is that really legal advice? I don't think that it was.
Well, every email I sent Jeremy said, you gotta recognize, Jeremy, I am obviously totally in a conflicted situation here. And a client can waive a conflict if you choose to do so and continue to ask me questions. And that's essentially how they've proceeded, because they kept sending me emails. And every one I wrote back to Jeremy, I said, you understand, this is not normal and it's a conflicted situation, but I'll tell you what I think, and I have done that.
That was not about how to let you go, though. That was about the public records request.
About a number of things, but, yeah, well, that was another one. And anything that was a comment about the, the city attorney issues was the same sort of discussion. But that's rather how it's gone.
Did you consult any of the other city administrator clerk, obviously you didn't talk to Susan?
No, I said, I, I talked to Jeremy, and I talked to Bob, and I talked to Brian, and I talked to Tim.
Before you spoke with him?
I'm just gonna let that out.
One day or two day?
After. Okay, so thirteen council comments, Brian?
We're still voting twelve, we keep going back, we're voting twelve here.
We made the motion to table it for six months and revisit.
Right, do you really think you need to table it? I mean, it's an issue that sounds like we ought to just keep as is.
Right.
What are we tabling it for? That doesn't make sense to me. Let's go back to where it was.
Because you have a motion.
We don't need a motion or anything, you just, you just said that you allowed him to stay on, well, let's do it.
That's what I said.
We don't need to take away anything.
Tyler, did you make a motion to postpone this for six months?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Nope, I would not make a motion on this, because I would rather just see it dissolve.
Motion would be to leave it as is?
Well, as I said with that earlier comment, get something on the book, but leave the situation as it is for now with no further action, if that's the motion, that's the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I don't get to make a motion.
The situation as it is with no other, further comments.
So it says to approve to advertise, you're not gonna advertise?
No. Because there's a possibility that he may retire and then he moves, comes into town, and then at that time...
It's all more than...
Completely, it's all... Completely it's possible.
Yes.
Yep, that's my motion.
No.
The situation as it is with the current county attorney, excuse me, city attorney. And no advertising for new city attorney.
As it, no advertising.
Motion been made and seconded, Bob, Bob did. Okay, voting, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Nay.
Pam?
Nay.
I get to break my first tie and I vote aye. Number thirteen, council comments. Bob?
I think they don't really have anything.
Pam? Tyler?
Uh, I do, um, I'm going to add a little bit to this night. That's embarrassing.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent. When a mayor, this is embarrassing. And when you called me instead of a gut feeling, that's even more embarrassing. So, before we start making decisions, let's hang this on a wall and look at it. And, so this shouldn't even come up, I mean, have to reverse a decision like that? And I read about it in the paper, I mean, he obviously, you didn't talk to me about it, which is fine, I mean, that's why we got meetings. They talked to everybody else about it. Now, I talked to, last week or so, a lot of people come to me that I would call mentors of the town, our peers.
Sure.
And they were totally against any decisions like this. I think we need to start listening to them, where they have experience. I mean, we got your first month, Bob, you've been on before, right? Pam, two years into it, me, one year appointed into it, so this is really my first time, Jeremy's a brand new. I mean, we don't have much experience, so let's slow down on decision-making, things will happen. But no, I don't think Bruce, I think Bruce is doing his job, we just proved that the few things that were saying that he wasn't doing his job wasn't his job.
Right.
So if there's a performance issue, let's discuss it, but I really don't think there is. And, you know what, if Bruce wants to retire someday, then forty years, I think we should need to talk to him about it. Not just, hey, we're going to put it in the paper and surprise, so let's, let's keep this in mind, let's figure this out and let's all work together. But it is a hundred percent embarrassing, dude.
Another thing Susan is getting, or she's still trying to do the, or the training for everybody?
City training is something that we've talked about for a while and, you know, every community is, around us is interested in doing it as a group. You guys are here to do what's in the best interest of your city and sometimes personal issues get in the way and we've got to like, stop that and focus on the best interest of the city. I can't tell you how many phone calls I fielded since this happened and who do I talk to? The business owners, the stakeholders, the leaders of this town and our investors. I have a million dollars worth of investors doing projects in the city, of which you only know about three hundred thousand dollars, and they are calling me wanting to jump the ship because of all of this, this doesn't look good. The manufacturer that we're trying to work on bringing here, the first thing he did after he met with us was start liking our social media accounts, sees what happens on the Plainview news and asks me if I can negotiate him a deal for another town, this is not good. It's easy to stop, the drama has to stop. I can't tell you how many businesses have jumped ship from here and not come here because of the stick they've seen on, online, that's not just been this year. It was last year too and the year before, it's got to end. You're jeopardizing the future of this community by continuing the drama.
So then with the social media comments, we got to remember, we cannot just be commenting. Even in your private little message group you guys got, cannot be commenting. Let's just keep the stuff here at the meeting. And we're going to probably have to revisit that, I would feel, but just keep that in mind.
Can I just say that to have one person have the authority to just say, I don't want you anymore in my mind creates a hostile environment for all you people that are appointed, that's not a good feeling when you're trying to work for the city of Plainview. There's got to be, I know the league of municipalities says that you can do that, but you should do it with just cause and accurate conversations.
With the correct people.
Correct.
Brian? Have you done, I'm sorry, what are you, please?
Yeah, I, I think I got my point for us.
I can, I believe you.
Okay.
Again, Brian?
I don't know what you think.
Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.